Buenas, en half a day, welcome to your Guam Legislature, 38th Guam Legislature. Today's public hearing is conducted by the Committee on Finance and Government Operations, and is called to order at this time exactly 1400. First notice of this public hearing was disseminated to all senators and public media outlets on September 2, 2025, with its second notice disseminated in September 5, 2025. The hearing notices were also made available on the Guam Legislature's website, our legislative calendar, and the government in Guam's public notice portal. This afternoon, the committee will hear testimony on the following bills: Bill Number 1-38COR, introduced by Senator Telo Taidegui, an Act to amend 26603D, 5B of Article 2, Chapter 26, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the annual appropriation level to the Guam Cancer Trust Fund. Also, Bill Number 177-38COR, introduced by Frank F. Blas Jr., an Act to add a new 1041, excuse me, 1041, Chapter 10, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, or designating December 10 as Insular Forest Guard Memorial Day. We'll also hear Bill 128-38COR, introduced by Therese M. Turlahi, an Act to amend 6205 of Chapter 6, Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring that copies of petitions for above-staffed recruitments be posted on the Guam Public Notice website and sent to the Speaker of Illegisitur in Guahan. At this time, I'd like to recognize my colleagues that have joined me. First of all, the Vice Chair of the Committee, Vice Speaker Ada, also Speaker Blas, thank you for joining us, Senator Telo Taidegui, and also Senator Perez, Senator Lujan, and Senator Gumitautau, thank you for joining the committee today. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone in attendance of Illegisitur in Guahan's general rules of conduct. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chairperson before speaking and shall state their full name for record-keeping purposes. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance and the nature of the bill that is on the agenda. Personal inferences to the character or motive of any senator or individual testifying are not permitted. The chairperson of the committee may order removal from the hearing of any member of Illegisitur in Guahan or the public audience who fails to observe proper decorum pursuant to the 38th Guam Legislature standing rules. Any violation of this general of conduct will result in immediate removal from the public hearing room. With that, we will now proceed to hear testimony on Bill Number 1-38, and I will recognize the bill's author, Senator Telo Taidegui. You may proceed.
Sijus Massey, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to my colleagues, and especially good afternoon to those who are listening and those who are here today to testify on this bill. You know, every year on Guam, hundreds of families will face some type of cancer diagnosis, hundreds. These diseases is not discriminative. It could be you, it could be your loved one. And in fact, there have been more people today who have never smoked or worked in a hazardous environmental situation that has now been diagnosed with lung cancer. It was just a few years ago when a good friend of mine, who was not only an athlete but a trainer, never smoked in his life, developed lung cancer. Cancer touches every village, every faith, every family. Again, it does not discriminate. While we cannot stop this disease, we can choose how we respond. That's why I introduced Bill 1-38COR, to make the health of our island top priority and to give our people a fighting chance to survive. This legislation amends Guam's Healthy Futures Fund statute, guaranteeing that 15%, which is in current law and has been in current law, 15% of tobacco tax revenues and at least 4 million is dedicated annually to Guam Trust Cancer Fund. Now that means currently, the Healthy Futures Funds goes to, 15% of that goes to the Guam Cancer Trust Fund. That's never been, that hasn't been the case. In the last six years, six years, we have shortchanged the Guam Cancer Trust Fund by over $19 million, $19 million. And in FY 2019, not even a dime, not even a penny was appropriated to the Guam Cancer Trust Fund. $19 million. How many people could we have saved if we just maintained what the current law required us to do? This funding is not an appropriation from the general fund, but a fund that comes from taxes on tobacco and alcohol, also known as sin taxes. This isn't just about numbers, though. It's about real lives. The Guam Cancer Trust Fund provides stable, protected funding for critical services such as cancer screening to catch the disease early when it's most treatable, treatment support to help families afford desperately needed care, patient and family services so that no one fights alone, education and outreach to build awareness and save lives. For years, the Guam Cancer Trust Fund has been underfunded, creating uncertainty for our families. While the recent budget amendment secured full funding for one year, we can't rely on stopgap measures. We must ensure this funding is protected consistently and is guaranteed. What Bill 1-38 does, it guarantees the Guam Trust Fund $4 million or more, depending on the percentage of the Healthy Futures Fund. Bill Number 1 is more than an appropriation. It's a promise to every patient, to every family, and survivor that you are not alone. By supporting this bill, you are saying yes to hope, yes to healing, yes to a future where every person on Guam battling cancer has access to care and the dignity they deserve. Sijus Massey, Mr. Chair.
Sijus Massey, Senator Taidegui. So what we have, or who we have signed up today, I only see one individual that signed up for oral, Terry Kuo Ba? So anybody else who has desires to have oral testimony, please come up to the table now? Welcome to your home as well, Senator Boran. So I'm going to go ahead and defer to the ladies and, of course, one of our colleagues as well, former senator.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Please proceed, Louise.
I apologize for not putting the X in the box where it says I'm going to provide oral testimony. I was just, I was without my glasses. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to testify on behalf of this Bill Number 1-38COR. Chairman Chris Duñez, thank you so much. Vice, I'm sorry, Speaker Frank Blas, Vice Chair, Vice Speaker Anthony Ada, Senator Sabrina Salas Matanani, Senator Sean Gumitautau, Senator Jesse Lujan, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Chris Barnett, and of course, the author of this legislation, Senator Telo Taidegui. Thank you for inviting me here. Senator Duñez Sijus Massey, for this opportunity to submit testimony in strong support of Bill Number 1-38COR, I do so not only on behalf of myself but also on behalf of every cancer patient, survivor, caregiver, and family who continues to fight this battle every single day. My advocacy comes from a deeply personal place, rooted in my family's journey and strengthened by the countless voices of the community who deserve better care, prevention, and hope. Cancer is not a distant issue. It touches every family on Guam, like Senator Telo said. Whether it's the patient enduring the painful treatments, the caregiver sacrificing everything to provide comfort, or the family struggling to raise funds through, and we've seen it, the car washes, the food plate sales, the fundraisers, the GoFundMe pages, cancer is everywhere, every day, 52 weeks out of the year. My own family lived this reality when my mother was diagnosed with cancer years ago. We did everything humanly possible to raise money for urgent treatment. That desperate fight for her life is where my advocacy was born. Through that journey, I co-piloted a show called My Story during my time in Sorensen Media Group. Month after month, I interviewed cancer warriors who bravely shared their struggles. They showed me the courage it takes to fight not only the disease but also the stigma, the fear, and the financial burden that came with the hearing with these three devastating words. Hearing these words, "You have cancer." From those stories, I saw clearly the enormous disparity that still exists in prevention, screening, and treatment here on Guam. I'm usually not shy of the microphone, but... Over the years, I have been honored to serve alongside passionate leaders through the Comprehensive Cancer Coalition. From the days of Kavita Hemlani's chairmanship to the leadership of today's co-chairs, Liza Lynn and Naomi Delmundo, the coalition has been a lifeline of advocacy. We stand on the shoulders of giants like Rosalie Zabala, whose memory and activism still drives our work forward. But passion alone is not enough. We need consistent funding, resources, and legislative support to turn advocacy into action. When I served in the 34th and 35th Legislatures, I fought every session to protect the Guam Cancer Trust Fund. I saw firsthand how time and time again cancer was overlooked in favor of other priorities. But cancer does not wait. It did not pause for COVID. It does not stop for politics. In 2020, when others fought their share of the Healthy Future Fund, I fought to ensure that at least 1.6 million went directly to the Guam Cancer Trust Fund. This was back in 2020. Should we consider this a win? No, it's actually a failure because we didn't give the Guam Cancer Trust Fund what it was due. My message was simple then, and it remains true now. Our cancer patients cannot wait. This is why Bill Number 1-38 is so important. This bill restores what should never have been taken away, ensuring that cancer patients and their families receive the resources they deserve as the law intended. Passing this measure is not about politics. It's about people. It's about the mothers and the fathers and the brothers and the sisters and children whose lives depend on it on early detection, on treatment, and support. I'm going to add some names to the data that goes around a lot, that really drives policy. I think of Rosalie Zabala. I think of Julie Duñez. I think of Braden Manley. I think of Carol Cruz and so many others whose lives were lost to cancer. Passing this bill will not bring them back, but it will bring peace of mind to families currently fighting, and it will save lives in the future through prevention and early detection. I want you to remember that September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. November is Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Every month, cancer takes more of our loved ones. We cannot stop the loss, but we can act with urgency and compassion to reduce the burden of Guam's families. I urge you to stand with our community. Stand with the patients, the survivors, the caregivers, the advocates. Stand for life. Stand for hope and for justice. Pass this bill, Number 1-38COR. Sijus Massey.
Sijus Massey, Senator Louise Boran, thank you for your testimony. I'd also like to recognize Senator Sabrina Salas Matanani. Thank you for joining us, as well as Senator Barnett. Mr. Terry, you're now recognized.
It's a hard act to follow, so I'm going to hit the... I did provide written testimony. I'm just going to hit some of the bullet points because I really can't follow that. That's really a great testimony. My name is Terry Quabo. I'm the Executive Director for Guam Cancer Care. Our nonprofit has been existence since the beginning of the Cancer Trust Fund, and in the last 14 years, we have helped over 4,400 Guam residents afflicted by cancer. Some of our stats, we've issued over $600,000 in patient supplies. We provided $2.1 million in financial assistance, and one of the biggest numbers is a $33.8 million in outside resources that our organization brings to cancer patients. And some of that is, like Senator Telo says, it's... What does that actually do? If you have relatives who have cancer and they're being prescribed certain drugs, these are exorbitantly high. I mean, I could name all the types of drugs that range $30,000 a month. That's one of the biggest things that they can't afford. There is a lot of disparity that you guys don't see in regards to cancer treatment. One of the biggest disparities are the working class. Whether you're getting Medicaid, they have a better advantage to healthcare than people in the working class. Some of the people, workers in Guam that have a $2,000 deductible or the prescription that their cancer doctors prescribing them is not part of the formulary, that's one of the things we're dealing with. And we're having to go around circles to find the drugs for them for free. But what's really important here is not only funding the numerous nonprofit organizations that provide these key direct support services to hundreds of cancer patients, is the fact that 15 years ago, when this body, the 30th Guam Legislature, created the Guam Cancer Trust Fund, there are four members in that, I was just looking at the bill. Speaker Blas, Vice Speaker Ada was part of the 30th, Senator Telo and Senator Pino Munya Barnes. You guys had the foresight, and under Senator B.J. Cruz, to find and dedicate funding from sin taxes to help those who have cancer. But like Senator Telo said, not just six years where they were underfunded by $19 million, but since the beginning, the Cancer Trust Fund has never gotten their fair share. Only last year, in Budget Law 37125, projected revenues in their Healthy Futures Fund was $23 million. 15% of that should have been 3.5. But what did the initial Budget Act do? Only appropriated $1 million. You guys called into a special supplemental budget hearing. We had to pack this room with all the constituents, all the cancer patients. We had cancer patients out there, just came out of the, you know, the emergency room in their mask. And I felt bad for them because every year we have to lobby, lobby this body to protect the funding that was guaranteed under this act. What I request, I support Bill 1-38. I hope there's some kind of language that can strengthen this bill or strengthen the law to guarantee the money. So we don't have to come back every year and lobby and put in the onus of funding what is rightfully for these patients. Maybe it's something different because, you know, you could check the C R E R and, you know, Healthy Futures Fund has taken a dip over the past couple of years. And one of the things that was brought up is smokers are not stopping smoking. They're just transitioning to another delivery source, whether it be vaping or other forms. But one recommendation is to look at other taxations, maybe taxing vape. Because people are not just quitting smoking. They're just transitioning to another delivery system. So we urge, we support this bill. We hope that you look at other ways to sustain the funding source to the Healthy Futures Fund because not only the Cancer Trust Fund is benefiting from this, it's other health-related programs. So I want to close by supporting Senator Telo's bill. This is going to help benefit a lot of people in the cancer community. And I want to thank you for really introducing this bill that would really strengthen the Cancer Trust Fund. Thank you.
Sijus Massey, Terry, and you're correct. And I was proud to co-sponsor the supplemental. And I was also proud to make sure at least the first $3 million was in this current fiscal year's budget. And Senator Telo had a successful amendment to bring it up to the actual formulary. So that's why we wanted to make sure that we can start discussing this as the alternate. And I'll go over the, what do you call that fiscal note on this later, but I want the senators to be able to speak first. Senator Telo, would you like to go first, or do you want to be the last?
Yeah, I'll yield to my colleagues to speak first, and I'll do my closing. But I just want to recognize that the American Cancer Society also provided written testimony in support.
Yeah, there are a number, we can just do that right now then too. There was also Guam Cancer Care, as well as social service in support, and the Guam Cancer Trust Fund. Thank you, Senator. So going with the next, Vice Speaker Ada and Vice of the Committee as well. You recognize.
I don't have any questions for the panel. I'd just like to thank them for coming down to testify on this piece of legislation. I think that, you know, Senator and Terry, you're both right. You know, all families are affected by cancer, and no one's excluded from that. How we help those that are affected is what really matters. And how we get there is going to be one of those challenging things. But, you know, eventually, eventually it will happen. Thank you again for coming down to testify in favor of this bill and Senator Telo Taidegui for introducing it. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. Senator Gumitautau, you recognize?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you both for being with us this afternoon. I'm not sure if you can answer these questions for me, but I'm just going to give it a shot if I possibly can. Regarding the annual reports that are published by the Guam Cancer Trust Fund, according to the organization's website, which was updated as of December 2024, is a report each for the FY 2023 and 2024 expected to become available before the end of the current fiscal year? And generally speaking, I'm, because I had a chance to spend a lot of time on the website over the weekend, but how many patients, it's hard to read it, but how many patients were actually denied assistance during these fiscal years due to funding limitations? Do you guys have any idea?
Senator, thank you for that question. We're discussing here, I think that data can come from the Guam Cancer Trust Fund itself. But yeah, I don't have any specific numbers on patients that were denied because of lack of funding through the fund.
For Guam Cancer Care, we don't deny patients, but we did curtail one of our programs, financial assistance. And last year, we provided $539,000 in financial assistance grants. And this year, we didn't have the funding. It was not approved. But we are going to be lobbying with the Cancer Trust Fund to reinstate that because that's something that patients need. This is really tied to like the working class, where you have a high deductible of $2,000 and your radiation therapy is $10,000. And it's a deterrent for patients to get treatment when they can't afford it. It's really, cancer care is not cheap. Whether it be radiation or oncology, the drugs are expensive. And, you know, the whole point of the Cancer Trust Fund and the nonprofits is to ease that burden. And we've kind of eliminated the gaps, whether it be transportation, whether it be getting the drugs. Our program gets the free drugs, whether it be patient supplies. There are still disparities and there are still gaps that eventually they can be resolved. The cancer community is ever-changing. We just lost one of the cancer providers, Dr. Friedman's clinic. And now everybody's scrambling to go to the remaining two clinics, which is FHP and GRMC. And people are electing to go off-island. But still, it's very difficult at times when patients really want to try to survive and they need... Really, these programs are really to level the access to care, and that's the difficult part of it.
No, no, and thank you so much again, and I understand the advocacy. I just, I'm trying to make sure I understand the bit of the issues. And maybe, Mr. Chairman, because I know they're not here, so I'll go ahead and ask you, Ms. Chair, if we can get at least for the committee report or in the markup. With respect to OPA report 19-08, on the Guam Cancer Trust Fund that was issued back in December of 2019, which found that between 2015 and 2019, the fund paid a nonprofit organization's personnel costs totaling $2.4 million, which represents 56% of the total projects, total project costs awarded. So I'm hoping that the committee can find out what policies might be in place in order to assist the Guam Cancer Trust Fund, monitor the extent to which nonprofits are using taxpayer dollars more for personnel costs instead of direct patient care and support services. And, Mr. Chair, one last question is for the committee. Is recognizing that the Guam Cancer Trust Fund is authorized to receive additional appropriations, contributions, endorsements, gifts, cash, or otherwise from any other source, including Guam, corporations, or other businesses, individuals, and interested parties? What non-taxpayer resources have been secured by the organization during at least the last five years? And how were these resources incorporated into the fund's annual spending plan during this period? Mr. Chair, the website, it's, it does go back for the last five years, but I, as I was just doing the research ahead of this hearing, just a couple of questions that came to me, hoping that it can be ascertained during the markup process. Mr. Chair, thank you again for allowing me to ask the questions today.
Sijus Massey, Senator Gumitautau. We certainly will go and review all audits since the beginning, since you've requested that, and we'll make it part of the committee report and discuss that during the markup. Sijus Massey, for your participation. Senator Lujan, you're recognized?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, no, no questions, just a comment basically. And I want to thank, of course, the author. And likewise, former senator and sir, and I can thank you for the work that you do. You know, we hope and pray that one day we put everybody in the cancer business out of business. That's what we pray for. Likewise, both my parents as well were cancer patients and, yes, succumbed to that, you know. But I totally support this and I hope down the line as well, your recommendations, that we yield to those recommendations and that we're fully funded, you know, in years to come as well. And with all the research that is going on, I know there are a lot of headways, you know, in regards to cancer care at this point, but it's still, we still have a lot of folks that need the care. And again, thank you very much for all that you guys do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sijus Massey, Senator Lujan. Senator Perez, you're recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so, you know, I thank you for all the work that you do. You know, my family has reached out to Guam Cancer Trust Fund for assistance during times of need. And I just want to thank you for your service to our island. And I do too have some questions regarding how we can leverage these dollars to serve more people. And there was an audit that was done in 2019 that came out and regarding reimbursable, having the proper documentation for reimbursements. And I guess the question is to Terry, to what extent has that audit been addressed, those concerns? And do you believe that the governance of Guam Cancer Trust Fund under the University of Guam President, do you find that that is an efficient way of, I guess, getting your budget implemented?
Thank you, Senator, for the question. It's kind of a loaded question because I don't want to bite the hand that feeds me because it'll be more difficult when I submit my budget request next month. I think it's working fine now. I know if they're looking at other avenues of where the Cancer Trust Fund should fall under, maybe public health, but I think it's working. They've made huge advances in the last 14 years. It was a struggle in the first couple of years, but I think they're doing a good job in implementing it. They're streamlining their operations and they're processing reimbursement requests in a timely manner. So I think it's working well under the purview of the University of Guam. In regards to the audit, the 2019 audit, in my personal opinion, they didn't really talk to the nonprofits. We are actually being audited right now by the OPA and totally different set of parameters. And we're speaking directly with them. And maybe, once we get the audit results, we'll provide it to you guys. But we're confident that a lot of the corrective action plans... But we're confident that a lot of the corrective action plans that we implemented are in place to ensure that the funds are properly monitored and spent. But I will defer to them as soon as their audit is completed. So they have a more up-to-date audit, and maybe that could be part of the record when you guys, because I believe they're going to be auditing the other nonprofits under the Cancer Trust Fund. It's part of their requirement under the Budget Act, so.
Okay. And what is your sense as far as the expenditures? Is most of it going to direct service? What portion is going to education? And do you have a breakdown, a general breakdown for us to look at?
I think that's more, again, I work for Guam Cancer Care, and I think more of the breakdown of how the funds are appropriate to the five or six nonprofits should be posed to the Cancer Trust Fund. They have a breakdown of where the monies are going to. I can only speak on behalf of my nonprofit. I don't speak for GCTF.
Yeah, that would be good to know, to make sure that we're getting the money to where it's needed. And of course, prevention, obviously, in one of the testimonies, we really need to work on prevention. As you know, we have a, I would say, an epidemic amongst our youth for vaping. And, you know, we really need to work on that. I believe there's a bill that would provide more funding, because I see that there is a huge underperformance in the Healthy Futures Fund, right? Almost like, I would say, half since 2020. Let's see, about 20 million, has dropped 20 million. So that's almost half. That's huge. It's a concerning number, especially if we're trying to get more funding for Guam Cancer Trust Fund, but also to these other agencies that can intervene and do more prevention work. So not only increasing the amount to Guam Cancer Trust Fund is important, but also increasing the Healthy Future Fund as a whole is critical. So I look to working with my colleagues to address that. So I don't have any other points or comments or questions, but I do appreciate also your mission, Senator. You've worked, I remember when I was alongside with you, this was one of your missions, was to ensure that the Cancer Trust Fund gets its due amount. And it's great to see that the author of this legislation is picking up that mission as well, and I'm glad to see that, and that we were able to make it whole this time, but to continually do that, but also to increase the amount. As you know, you know, we were not included in the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act, and that would have provided more funding for, you know, for our veterans and for, as downwinders. That would have provided the people that were living here at the time of those, almost 60-plus nuclear weapons that were detonated as testing, which drifted over to Guam. And it was proven, it's on the record, the National Academy of Sciences provided that information or that support. So we have to fight that as well as supporting our local people through local funding. So to get your support in that, that would be very important, too, as well.
Thanks, Senator. If I could just add, like Terry Cuabo mentioned earlier, that people are, there's only a small percentage of people that are actually quitting smoking. They're just transferring over to another form of tobacco use, which would be like e-cigarettes. And so that could be another opportunity for this body to increase the Healthy Futures Funds by looking at the taxation of e-cigarettes. So that would be another opportunity. And yes, it decreased 20 by 20 million since the last time I served, but that doesn't mean that the services are still needed. They're absolutely needed. I think the Guam Cancer Trust Fund funds the majority of the Guam behavioral health and social services there. They take care of the entire behavioral health. All we ask is just that 15% to take care of the cancer patients now, and so that's really why we're sitting here today. Yeah, thank you. Sido Massey. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sido Massey, Senator Perez. Senator Montanani, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Senator Louise and Terry, for your advocacy and all the work you do for our cancer patients. After I was elected, I had the opportunity to meet with representatives from the Guam Cancer Trust Fund as well. Terry, I visited your offices in Tumuning and met with your staff. So just, I'm thankful, Sido Massey, for all you do. But I did have one question, and it stems from the meeting that I had with the Guam Cancer Trust Fund, and it was issues that they were having with cash flow and late allotments that were released to the fund. And in turn, it has an impact on the nonprofit organizations. So I wanted to just get an update on if this was still happening.
I can't speak to the releases of funds, but historically, as you probably saw in the news, where nonprofits are dependent on the release of, you know, the funds to, so we could implement our programs. And it was not intended to put UOG on notice, but we announced in the media that we're going to see services due to the release of funds. And it's through no fault of their own. It was, it's government. You know, you have to deal with DOA and BBMR to release the funds, and at times, you know, they withhold because of cash flow issues. And it does impact the nonprofits, not just Guam Cancer Care, but the five other nonprofits who are dependent on those funds to be released in a timely manner. And maybe that could be something that can be included in the law, where not only is it appropriate annually through the Budget Act, maybe the smooth transition of the funds being transferred over, if it's collected under revenue tax, that BBMR and DOA releases the money directly to GCTF without having to go through these enormous amounts of steps to get, because I know UOG calls DOA all the time or the governor's office to release the funds, and it's beyond our control. We're just asking that it doesn't impact our patients.
Thank you, Terry. Yeah, after that meeting with the Guam Cancer Trust Fund, and that was the main point of the meeting, was how these allotments were coming, there was such a delay. And so after we had met, it was interesting, because the funds were released to the fund. So thank you again for your advocacy, and I look forward to the debate on Bill One, which it has my full support. So thank you, Senator Tiedegui, for introducing this bill.
Sido Massey, Senator Montanani. Senator Barnett, you recognize?
Sido Massey, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to the people of Guam watching on our YouTube channel. Senator Louise and Mr. Cuabo, thank you very much for your testimony. And I know, Senator, you had mentioned a few names, but I wanted to add just a few more names. Rosario Tenorio Bates, my mom's late sister, Virginia Tenorio Jenkins, my mom's late sister, and my late party, Joaquin Casey Savage K. Conception, who I know you're very familiar with. And although all three of these individuals succumbed to cancer, all three of them were able to receive significant benefits and assistance from funds that derived from legislative appropriations to the Guam Cancer Trust Fund. And although these three people who are very near and dear to my heart passed many years ago, many others have also received funding. And that's why I took it very passionately in the budget process in the previous fiscal year, when the decision was made to not allow appropriation of excess revenues, which in turn led to a shorting of the Guam Cancer Trust Fund by about $2 million, I believe. And I remember at the time, some of my colleagues were celebrating the passage of the budget bill, because they had thought they got a big victory in an amendment that sought to open the racetrack, and, you know, we know how that ended up. And then, unfortunately, as you said, Mr. Terry, a lot of good people who were fighting a good fight against cancer were made, were made to come down here and to kiss the senator's rings and to go out and protest on the side of the road, and really, it's all just unnecessary. I mean, these people already have enough on their plate. They're literally fighting for their lives. So I didn't understand the political gamesmanship that happened in the last budget bill. That's why I voted no on it. It was very fortunate that you were able to get the funding that you deserved in the supplemental budget bill. But again, it was all unnecessary. Had this bill been in place and law in, you know, previous legislatures, we wouldn't be going through that. And so I'm very encouraged that it's getting a public hearing nine months into this term, even though it was the first bill introduced. And I commend Senator Tiedegui, because that was the first order of business, and I agree with her, that we have to make sure that we don't put our cancer patients, our families who are already going through the fight of their lives, we don't need them to come jump through hoops. I know some of my colleagues like to get their ring kissed. I'm not into that. We just have to do what has to be done for the people who need us to do it. And so I definitely support this bill. And I just wanted to also speak briefly on the decline in funding for the Healthy Futures Fund. I mean, we've been discussing this for the last couple of years, that it's directly tied to, you're right, people are moving off of traditional tobacco, for lack of a better term, and they're now doing the vaping. And we're talking about, we're just talking about, we're not talking about one or two cigarette smokers. We're talking about, I would say, probably half of the people who have consumed tobacco. And I think if you look at the numbers, the decline kind of matches up. And so we had had several bills in the previous term to address this leakage, this loss of tax revenue due to the inability of the legislature to pass a measure to tax the vape meaningfully, and the governor vetoed it. And so I know Senator Sin Augustine was a big proponent. I supported the bill, but we haven't seen any traction on it in this term. So, you know, I would ask the holders of the keys to this legislative term to move that thing forward. I know there's a very strong lobby with a lot of the vape groups. I know that there are individuals who've run for senator who are part of this vape lobby, but they have said on the record in public hearings that they support efforts to tax the vape, because they understand that it's leading to a significant drop in revenue, not just for the cancer patients, but also for interscholastic sports and all the other areas where this Healthy Futures money goes to assist. So, you know, it's unfortunate that we had to go through that exercise, I guess, in the last fiscal year. And again, I commend the author, and I also like to ask to be included as a co-sponsor. I'm not sure, I think my co-sponsor email got lost in January, but Senator Tiedegui, I know we fought hard side by side, along with some of my other colleagues in the last budget session. I'm grateful that we were able to take care of the $4 million in this session. However, I'm sure you know the governor has vetoed the bill, so it might be a little bit of back to the drawing board, but I'm glad you're here to keep it on our mind, so that we can get unanimous support for any effort to level up not just the funding, but the commitment, because there's a lot of talk about supporting the cancer patients. But at the end of the day, if we're not putting our name, raising our hand, all that talk is for naught. And so I hope that we can get at the very least the $4 million, but I think if we address the loss of revenue from the lack of taxation on vaping, we could end up seeing more revenues. And, you know, as the grant opportunities dry up across the spectrum, this is something that I think our government absolutely has an obligation, absolutely has a responsibility, and absolutely should not cut corners on. And so I stand fully in support of this bill and any effort, really, to increase the funding and to capture that lost revenue from the lack of tax on vape. So Sido Massey, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak on the bill, and I commend you guys and your organizations and all the nonprofits for the great work you do in assisting our families and patients who are fighting against cancer. Sido Massey.
Sido Massey, Senator Barnett. Just for the record, the current legislation being considered for the vape bill has been requested to be held back by the author. So the committee is not restricting that moving forward. It's been, and I believe there are still discussions on refining the bill, so hopefully, when the request comes, we'll put it out. I'll also discuss this bill and some of the observations from BBMR, but we'll continue with the testimony. Senator Calvo, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon and half a day to everyone. Thank you for being here, and thank you for your testimonies. Half a day, Senator Louise and Mr. Terry. You know, there's so many families here on Guam or global that's afflicted by cancer, and it's not an easy ordeal, not just for the patient, but also the families that are dealing with it. And I'm always thankful and grateful for people who continuously advocate to find solutions or at least aid families and individuals that are afflicted with cancer. So on that note, I don't really have any questions, but I'd like to send my gratitude to both of you and the community out there, and for all the other advocates that continue to press on the matter. I'd like to commend the author of this bill as well, because this is another initiative that will help address the issue of cancer. It's something that is prevalent in our community, and I know that every single individual that has come up with a solution like this bill is something like gold. So on that note, I thank every single one of you who are here in the public hearing room right now. I thank my colleagues for the support. As you guys can see, the whole panel is almost complete, so that means it's an important issue that we take not lightly, but seriously in our hearts. And on that note, thank you again to everyone, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sido Massey, Senator Calvo. Speaker Blas, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Senator Terry, thank you very much, and to all that are here in support or to listen in on the bill, listening very intently. I guess, you know, I guess one of my concerns here is concerns that were initially expressed by Senator Sean and Senator Perez, you know, with regards to the audit report, okay? And how the monies were being disseminated and spent. And Terry, you had me mention that there was an ongoing audit, and I see there's a member of the OPA that's here. Do you have any timeline as to when the audits will be completed, if I can ask, Mr. Chair?
Please identify yourself for the record, sir, and proceed.
Good afternoon. My name is Jared Hernandez. I'm from the Office of Public Accountability. I'm not on the audit team, but I have been corresponding with the team, and they are currently in the fieldwork with the hope of an audit report being issued either end of October or early November. Yeah, and then also, just to give an update, in addition to the Guam Cancer Trust Fund, the Healthy Futures Fund has also been wanting to go undergo a financial audit. It's since been kind of delayed, and the latest update is that there really is only EY who's the main auditor, and so DOA had asked that we kind of put a halt on the HH, sorry, HFF audit, so that the DOA and EY can focus on issuing the government-wide audit, which, as you know, is also really delayed. So just to give you an update on that as well.
I appreciate it, because that was actually the follow-up question to this, because I don't want them to be, you're already trying to squeeze a penny or nickel out of the two pennies that you're given. And I can see sometimes the disparate actions that need to be taken. And so I was, okay, what about the fund that funds this fund? Okay, when are we going to audit that? Thank you for answering the question. I guess my next question is with regard to the funding that you receive, and recognizing that it is disseminated to at least five different organizations, what is the method or the formula, if any, that is used to be able to decide who gets what amount?
Again, we both don't represent the Guam Cancer Trust Fund. They do have a board, a council, that reviews grants applications, and they do have some sort of methodology of probably racking and stacking based on priority and based on which gives the greatest impact to the patients. But again, I can't speak towards that. Maybe that's something that the committee can seek guidance from the GCTF, and they could probably provide their methodology on how grants are being reviewed and awarded.
And the reason why I'm asking this is because I recognize that each organization has a niche, if you will, in the kind of care that you provide, whether it be preventive, whether it be hospice, whether it be whatnot. And depending on what the priority is that is set by, I guess, the board, you know, as to, okay, we want the bulk of the money to go to here as opposed to here, I can see how that can affect the kind of assistance you can provide to a client, whether it be, whether or not you're going to give, you know, a class to a group of individuals on whether or not you're going to give, you know, class to a group of individuals on preventative measures versus the, you know, the kind of assistance you want to give to a family who is in hospice. And, and so, you know, I, I know that's far beyond the bounds of what this legislation is. What I appreciate about this legislation is, yes, it now puts teeth to the law to provide it, you know. Sometimes, you know, I'm a big stinker to this thing, okay? It's just, you know, government should only provide what the community can't. And this is one of those areas where the community needs help. And when we try to take away from what the community needs for what the government desires, that's not right. And I appreciate why this, why this, this proposal is before us.
And Speaker, to caveat on your question, you know, I, I know that the council, the Guam Cancer Trust Fund Council is making an effort to kind of understand more of what the different nonprofits offer. In fact, the GCTF Council is conducting a site visit on Guam Cancer Care to get a better understanding of what programs we implement and the benefits they have on patients. And like you alluded to, everybody has their own niche and, and weighing out what is, what creates the best value in regards to getting access to care. For example, nonprofits, some nonprofits provide support services, some nonprofits provide direct access to care. Like for us, we, we get the chemo drugs that the doctors prescribing them. That is actually helping them fight cancer. So, if the doctor says you need Halavin and it's going to cost you $17,000 a month and you can't afford it, that's more valuable than me transporting them to the clinic. It's, it's, we have to look at racking and stacking and survivability and what brings the biggest impact, the most bang for your dollar. As an example, you spend a dollar for a navigator who makes the call to Pfizer to get you the free drugs is more impactful than, you know, maybe prioritizing education. Because yes, it's important to educate people, but maybe Public Health has funding for education campaigns. Guam is so unique that 15 years ago, when you guys decided to fund or create the Cancer Trust Fund, it leveled the playing field. We have a better advantage for our cancer patients than everyone in the region. Saipan doesn't have a program that provides direct support in regards to financial assistance, or they've been trying to mirror our programs to figure out how their navigators can get the free drugs from the pharmaceutical companies. So, I commend all of you guys for looking at continuing to fund the Cancer Trust Fund because it's really helping our cancer patients fight the fight. And one day, like Senator Lawrence said, you know, I'm hoping we go out of business. I'm hoping that we don't have any more cancer nonprofits, because it's taxing on us as well when we're dealing with 4,400 patients. I lost my hair like 10 years ago. So, it, it's, it's a daunting task, and, and we do it because it's benefiting people. We see it every day, day in and day out. And, and I appreciate the support that this committee is giving to this bill. Thank you very much.
I appreciate you so much.
I'd like to just add, Speaker, thank you very much for that, that, you know, just because there are only five nonprofit organizations applying for the grant at the Guam Cancer Trust Fund, doesn't mean that's the only nonprofit organizations we have. It doesn't stop all the other nonprofit organizations that service cancer patients to come in and apply for it. And each, there's, as with any grant application, there's line items that determine exactly what it is that you're going to do with the money. And so I also want to commend the OPA for keeping on top of, of all the organizations that are receiving money through the Guam Cancer Trust Fund and making sure that they follow the law. But it doesn't take away the fact that we've never upheld the law to provide the trust fund the 15%.
Absolutely. And again, it went back to, you know, why I was asking the questions, because, you know, a lot of times the way it's written and the way it's presented, it makes you out to be the bad guy when you're trying to, again, squeeze a nickel out of the two pennies that you've got between your fingers. And, you know, Senator Louise, you're going to end with this. I mean, you and I both served in another organization, which we hope that one day will never need, need to exist, you know, with the Make-A-Wish Foundation. And you know, with Cancer Trust and Cancer Care, you just hope that one of these days it's not, no longer necessary. But until that time, there is the necessity to be able to fund it. So, I want to thank the author of the bill for this, and I, you've got my support in this as well. Thank you very much.
Sido Smasi, Mr. Speaker Blas. Senator Tello, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll try and keep this short and appreciate everybody who spoke on the, on this legislation, who came in front of us, Terry, Louise, thank you so much, of course, the ones that we received written testimony. And yes, Terry, I do remember last time we were here, I mean, this place was packed, you know, and I just think now is the time that we can avoid that by every one of us supporting this bill and providing the, you know, the funds that are needed for those who are dealing with cancer. And one of the things that we have to remember is that it's come a long way, like lung cancer. Now there's a therapy called immune therapy that's actually helping people survive. It's actually getting people who had cancer live longer. And that's what this is all about. But with that comes cost, because even though we're discovering these new treatments and plans, they cost more than they did 15, 10 years ago. I'm a survivor of cancer. I'm the, I'm one of the lucky ones, but it could come back. And I don't wish this upon anybody at all. If everyone in this panel right now stopped and mentioned somebody they knew with cancer, it wouldn't be just one, two, three, or four. If I asked everyone in this audience if they knew somebody who can't, had cancer, they would be able to say at least three or four different people. But if we can talk about survival, if we can talk about, well, how many people do you know who had cancer who survived? That's what we all need to be doing, is helping those people survive, live longer, to be able to see their child walk down the aisle, to be able to hold their grandchildren, to be able to play with their children. That's what we're here fighting for. And we're losing sight of that when in 2019, not one single dime was given to the Cancer Trust Fund, not one. $19 million that we could have saved so many of our people on this island, but $19 million was not given to the Cancer Trust Fund when it should be. So, what we're doing today with this bill is we're ensuring at least 4 million, at least 4 million, the next time a budget bill comes up, that they get it or even more. That's what we're doing. It's simple, and it doesn't come out of the general fund, it comes out of a special fund. And we have to remember that. Before I close, I'd like to recognize certain nonprofit organizations, and I'm, I'm glad to see that you're here from Totu Guam and the Cancer Care, I mean, you've, yeah, and with Cancer Care, but they had real impact, these nonprofit organizations had real impact on our families here. And because of the Guam Cancer Trust Fund, thousands of residents have received life-saving screenings and financial assistance and supportive care. And I would like to thank some of the organizations and their programs when funding was provided to them to assist our people with this deadly disease. And it doesn't have to be a deadly disease. It doesn't have to be a death sentence. It could be a survival if we all stick together. And I ask every single one of you to please reach out personally to each senator and ask for their help. And please, go home and tell your other families that, you know, write to your senators, tell them to support this bill. I'd like to thank the University of Guam Cancer Research Center for advancing cancer studies and community outreach. They don't just give money, they do all the data and the information that's needed. The Cancer Care Trust Fund also helps the cancer care, who's here, Terry, providing financial aid, thank you. Patient navigation, transportation, prevention programs, thank you, Terry. American Cancer Society delivering direct patient support services, thank you. Adua Foundation, assisting families with outreach and, and patient care, thank you. Catholic Social Services and other nonprofits offering survivorship programs, support groups, and education campaigns, thank you. The Department of Public Health and Social Services, leading the prevention initiatives and cancer awareness efforts, thank you, Louise. The Edward M. Calvo Cancer Foundation, easing the financial burden of treatment, thank you. The Guam Regional Medical City, Guam Memorial Hospital, expanding local cancer screening and treatment capacity, thank you. Totu Guam Foundation, empowering communities through cancer education and prevention, thank you. And thank you for the hope and support you have provided. Now we need to do our part, and I encourage again, everyone reaching out to your senators, your families and friends, and say, and being a part of making Bill 1-83 a reality for the future. Sido Smasi, Mr. Chair.
Sido Smasi, Senator Titegui, and I'd like to also recognize those others who signed in, Janelle Luhon in support from Guam Cancer Trust Fund, Marissa Villiverdi, Guam Cancer Trust Fund, Diane Calvo from Catholic Social Service, Remy Lynn Yamada from Guam Cancer Trust Fund, and Pete Mano from Catholic Social Service. In closing, just a couple of comments. Senator Titegui and I shared the committee on taxation, and I wanted to make sure, because I was still following up with rev and tax. And here is what the final statement of the Bureau of Budget Management Research Fiscal Note says in terms of how they calculate what's proposed in the bill. Based on the estimated HFF, Healthy Future Fund collections, the above table shows that 15% appropriated to the Guam Cancer Trust Fund is approximately $4.7 million, exceeding the 4 million proposed in the bill. However, the table does not reflect any other appropriations from the Healthy Futures Fund, which could affect overall collections. Furthermore, absent comment from the Department of Revenue and Taxation, DRT, specific to the Healthy Future Fund's collections, the Bureau is unable to ascertain the fiscal impact of Bill Number 1-38. I certainly do agree with Senator Titegui. The, the issue here, at least the fundamental that we can approach, is the minimum threshold. And that's something that our committees will work on going forward. We need to get rev and tax to give us the information, and I will continue to seek their guidance. I wish they were here today. The other thing is, is that we've got to keep in mind the budget process. Senator Louise, you remember this? We also have the EBR that comes from the governor's office. You know, fortunately, this year, it matched up, and then we were able to amend it on the floor. So, certainly, we're going to move this forward, and the budget process, at least in this legislature, has, has successfully started, but the 3 million, I'm going forward and, and actually got the formula. But the 4 million here is very well contemplated, and then we'll have to see the disposition of the governor's office when we send this bill down. But I look forward to a speedy markup on this. Like I said, Senator Titegui and I share different roles with taxation, and I know that we will get it marked up, get these things cleared up, and move it forward. So, thank you once again for your testimony. At this time, this will complete the hearing on Bill Number 1-38 COR, and thank you, everyone, for joining us. So, we'll move now over to the next bill that's on the agenda. Bill Number 177-38 LS, introduced by Frank F. Blas, our speaker, Senator Chris Burnett, Senator Trista Lahey, myself, Christopher Duñez, Sabina Flores-Perez, Telo T. Titegui, Jesse Luhon, Vincent A. Borja, Joe S. Sinagastin, Shelley D. Calvo, Sean Gavitalto, Senator Will Parkinson, Senator Tina Winy Barnes, and Vice Speaker Tony Haddad. I think we have a whole, a whole contingent here, Speaker. And this bill is an act to add a new 1041 Chapter 10 to Title 1 Guam Conraditated relative to designating December 10th as Insular Force Guard Memorial Day. And I will now ask our good speaker to introduce his legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for my colleagues for being here, and thank you for all who were attendants that have been affected by this bill. Oh, I'm sorry, the Insular Guard, they're no longer here. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak on an issue that quite frankly has been long overdue. I introduce Bill 177, an act to create, declaring December 10th as Insular Force Guard Memorial Day, to provide the several hundred members of the Insular Force Guard with the honor and recognition that they deserve and which for over 40, 80 years has been absent. Eighty-four years ago, on December 8th, our island fell under attack. On December 10th, our island surrendered. But before the flag of the United States was lowered for the last time for nearly three years, the Chomoral men of the Insular Force Guards stood their ground. They were not professional soldiers, they were fishermen, farmers, sons, brothers, ordinary people placed in extraordinary circumstances, and they did not run. They fought with limited weapons, minimal training, and under the weight of colonial status, but with limitless courage. Some were wounded, others were taken as prisoners, a few never came home, but their actions spoke clearly. Guam was not surrendered without a fight. Yet, for too long, their service has remained the shadows of history. By declaring December 10th as Insular Force Guard Memorial Day, we reclaim that history, we honor their memory, and we teach future generations that tomorrow bravery is not a legend, it is not a myth, it is a legacy. This bill, however, is not just about remembrance, it's about recognition. It's about giving our people the dignity of being seen, heard, and remembered for the role they played in defending not just this island, but the ideals we all share. This bill should be enacted into law, should it be enacted in law, will let December 10th stand not only as a date of occupation, but as a day of honor. A day when Guam remembers her sons who stood, who fought, and who proved that love for once homeland is a force greater than fear. I want to thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak on this bill, and I will listen intently to my colleagues and to anyone whom we testify. Thank you very much.
Sido Smasi, Mr. Speaker. I don't have a sign-in sheet. I believe we did not have anyone signed in for this bill, but I want to give my colleagues, particularly since everyone here is a cosponsor on the bill, a chance to make some comments on the bill. So, Vice Chairman of the Committee and Vice Speaker, Tony Haddad, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to my colleague, Speaker Blas, for introducing this piece of legislation to recognize our Insular Guard and for the, for the general public who are not aware that the memorial that stands in the Plaza de España, that is the memorial that recognizes our Insular Guard forces. For many years, that memorial has been unkept, unfortunately, and in a very dilapidated state. When the 38 Guam Legislature came into office, I made it my mission to ensure that that memorial gets the dignity that it deserves, because those are the men who fought right there at the plaza to defend our island. And for many, many, many years, that memorial was not regarded as one that should be recognized and dignified as all memorials have been throughout our island. So, with this, this piece of legislation to finally recognize those who have fought to defend our island at the onset of World War II, that that memorial, we can gather around there, perhaps this December 10th, and fully recognize those who have fought to defend this island. You can drive by there at night and see how brightly lit that memorial is, the lights that shine on that memorial. Eventually, one day, we'll have a flagpole there to recognize and Eventually, one day, we'll have a flagpole there to recognize and symbolize the dignity and the respect that they should have been given for the past many years that have not. So thank you, Speaker Blas, for introducing this legislation, again, to formally recognize and memorialize those who have fought to defend the island at the onset of World War And hopefully, again, one day that we continue to, our children and our grandchildren, you know, my grandfather was an Insular Guard. His name is inscribed on that memorial over there. So when we celebrate and we memorialize them, it will be one with dignity and respect that is properly due to them, just like every other memorial that we memorialize during Liberation Day, Armed Forces Day, Memorial Day. Now the Insular Guard gets their day, December 10th. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sijus Massey, Vice Speaker, and thank you to, under your leadership and the team that you've assembled for all the hard work they do in the maintaining the memorial, the plaza, all of the properties under the Guam Legislature's purview, and we really appreciate the work that they do and your leadership in that area. This time, I'd like to recognize Senator Sean G. Batalto.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and again, just a couple of, I guess, questions back to the committee, but if I can. Recognizing the historical connection between the Guam National Guard, Guam militia, and the Insular Force Guard, to what extent has the Guam National Guard contributed thus far to the development of Bill 177? And how can the National Guard serve a more prominent role in organizing annual Insular Force Guard Memorial Day celebrations moving forward? As a chair of the National Guard, Mr. Chair, I know I'm going to ask a question too, and I know that the author would probably do the same. Also acknowledging, Mr. Chair, that the bill does not propose an official holiday requiring the closure of government operations with the exception of critical services, what information is available regarding the level of coordination and expenditures that may be required on the part of the government of Guam for successful tributes each year, beginning possibly in December 2025? Mr. Chair, and thank you for the time, and to the bill's author, thank you for allowing me to be a co-sponsor on this measure. Thank you so much.
Sijus Massey, Senator Batalto, we will take that up in the markup. I will note that the BBMR designation for this under the fiscal note recognizes it currently as an administrative in nature, and so, but we will get that information to ensure when we mark up any of the comments, the questions that you've proposed. Thank you, Senator Batalto. Senator Talat Tadegui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the author of this legislation. I think that it brings a lot of good things to the island, recognizing historical recognition, education value, cultural preservation, community unity, and legislative continuity, and I greatly appreciate those merits into the bill, but also like to maybe ask the author too, if we could look at Saipan or the Cenomai that were, if any of them were a part of the Insular Force Guard too, maybe reach out to our brothers, sisters to the outer islands and find some way to incorporate them as well. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity, and I support this legislation. Thank you.
Sijus Massey, Senator Talat Tadegui. Senator Luhon, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, also, I'd like to thank the speaker for the introduction of the bill. Finally, we've heard stories, of course, of the Insular Guard of Guam, but finally, again, recognize them and their own special day. But likewise, jump on what Senator Batalto has said, that if there's a potential for collaboration, of course, with the Department of Education, museums, military partners, to commemorate the day meaningfully. So I'm hoping that it's just not a day, again, but a meaningful celebration of that day to honor the lives of, again, the Insular Guard. So again, jumping on what Senator Batalto had mentioned, that I'm sure we'll take that up in the markup, that, again, let's include our military partners, because they were the ones that defended our island and fought hard, put their lives on the line for the people of Guam. And so we commemorate, of course, on Liberation Day, and now it's time to honor our brave souls that here are from Guam. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Sijus Massey, Senator Luhon. Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank the sponsor of this bill for allowing me to co-sponsor. I think in looking at this piece of legislation, it's important to remember our history and to not only remember our history, but to honor those that have come before us in defense of our island, and also to take a hard look at history, to ensure that in memory of those that preserved our island, that we have the duty to ensure that we don't find ourselves in the same situation again. So if we can also, on this day, promote peace in our region and to fight for peace. Unfortunately, you know, we hear of an executive order where the Department of Defense is now called the Department of War, and that is very concerning to me, because it shows that there is some sort of provocation. And we, as an island, were in the middle of imperial forces fighting against each other, and we were caught up in this situation. And so the question is, what can we do as an island to rise above this in honor of our ancestors, in honor of these men that fought so bravely, even though they were at a huge disadvantage? And so we, as an island, we have brilliant people, and we can solve these problems, I believe, to protect our island and have the foresight to prevent war. Sijus Massey.
Sijus Massey, Senator Perez. Senator Montanani, you're recognized on the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Speaker Blas, for introducing this bill. As I was reading through it, I realized my name is not on here, so I just have one question. If you could add me as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Sijus Massey, Senator, I'm sure he'll handle that in the closing, and so we'll move along. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Sijus Massey, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to thank the author for including me as a co-sponsor on the measure, on the bill, which we, actually, we discussed this prior to one of the long budget session days across the hall in the session room, and the good speaker had asked me if I wanted to co-sponsor this bill, which would designate December 10th as Insular Force Guard Memorial Day. And I was very excited to accept the offer of a co-sponsorship, but I kind of didn't really hear what he had said, and so I had told him that my grandfather was in the Insular Force Guard, but I have to correct myself because I'm a little tangled on this side. My grandfather was in the Guam Combat Patrol, which I'll get to in just a second. So the Insular Force Guard was comprised of Chamorro men who basically, at the onset of the Japanese invasion, were told by the United States Navy to take up arms and to defend the island against really an invasion that there was no way of them beating back, but they fought courageously, and they fought with that legendary Chamorro bravery, and they're absolutely worthy of this recognition that will come from the passage of this bill, which I absolutely, again, support. And I would only ask the good speaker to consider, if he would, maybe in the markup process, adding the Guam Combat Patrol to this day of recognition, because the Insular Force Guard, you're right, done tremendous work and has lacked that recognition, but I would say the same of the Guam Combat Patrol. And to kind of show you the difference between the two is, in the waning days of the war, the Guam Combat Patrol was comprised of a lot of Guam Police Department officers, and so my grandfather was one of those GPD officers. He was just 18 at the time, as many of the members of the Guam Combat Patrol were, and they were, you know, given weapons, and they were told to hunt down all of the Japanese stragglers all over the island. And there's a lot of great articles, a lot of great history on the Guam Combat Patrol, as well as the Insular Force Guard, and I believe both of these entities, you know, unfortunately, as we, you know, near 100 years of liberation, I don't think we've given them the proper homage and the proper tribute. And so members of the Guam Combat Patrol were responsible for rounding up the Japanese stragglers, who remained hidden in the days, months, and even years, as we know, after the American reoccupation of the island. And so I just would beg the speaker's indulgence, I think it makes sense to combine the two groups into one holiday, but if not, you know, I would seek to introduce a legislation that would give the Guam Combat Patrol that recognition. But again, I fully support the bill, and I would just ask Speaker Blas's indulgence in maybe possibly amending it so that we could recognize both of these crucial and critical entities, which are a part of our storied war history, with one shared holiday. So Sijus Massey, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak, and I also stand in support of, obviously, the Insular Force Guard, the Guam Combat Patrol, and all of the families and descendants who have come forward in light of their good work that they've done for our island and our people. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sijus Massey, Senator Barnett. Senator Calvo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to thank and commend the author of Bill 177, Speaker Frank Blas Jr., and gratitude for the invitation to be a co-sponsor of this bill. This measure is more than symbolic. This is actually a meaningful reflection of Guam's resilience and sacrifice. It's a long overdue recognition of the man, the man who served in Guam's Insular Force Guard during World War II, many of whom endured capture, imprisonment, and death during the Japanese occupation. Their service represents a foundational chapter in our island's wartime history and civic identity. So by enshrining this observance in law, we affirm our commitment to historical remembrance and public education. We also create space for families, veterans, and educators to honor a legacy that has often been overlooked. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sijus Massey, Senator Calvo. Senator Speaker Blas, you may close on your bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank my colleagues for their testimony as well as their statements, and some really great ideas. Thank you very much. And to my colleague from Agueda, ma'am, yes, the only reason why is because you weren't on island, well, I guess, when we were passing this around. But, and to my colleague also from Epen, with regards to the combination, I think that is fitting too, and my colleague from Tumuning. I appreciate, and this is an effort to be able to look, and not just to people of Guam, people of Marianas, because as was stated, Senator Luhon and Senator Batalto, obviously, there's going to be a need to be able for the educational aspect and see how else we can perpetuate the, you know, the honor and the remembrance commemoration. And to my good colleague, the Vice Speaker, sir, on behalf of your grandfather, thank you very much for his service and everything. But, you know, ladies and gentlemen, this is more than just a day to remember, but it is a, is it a people to never forget, the bravery and the epitome of what our island has been and what it continues to be for the armed forces. You know, one of the proudest moments is when you have a military, high-ranking military member, say that they force a military member, a platoon, a brigade, a company from Guam made up of Chamorro soldiers, are some of the best soldiers and some of the best military personnel that you can have standing by your side, and that comes because of legacy, that comes because of the commitment, that becomes because of recognizing what we stand for. What this legislation doesn't say, and what the history has failed to be able to perpetuate is, while my opening statements said that they were told to defend the island with limited training, limited resources, limited supervision, and a lot of that was because, first off, they're only thought to be ceremonial. Quite honestly, there were, there was discussions amongst the commanding forces at the time, prior to them told to defend the island, that they didn't want to give them the weapons because they didn't want the savages to hurt themselves. Well, I'm just going to remind, that this day is going to remind the world that in the only American soil that was ever occupied and ever surrendered to an enemy force, that it was the Chamorro men who stood there and laid down their, laid down their lives with the limited resources they had, to defend not only their island, but to defend the flag. There is no other place in the United States that can say that it's done, in any war before then and any war since then. That is the legacy that we're going to remember on December 10th. Those are the men that we will never forget. That is the honor that we will perpetuate. So I encourage and I ask my colleagues for their full support. And, Mr. Chair, I want to thank you for having this public hearing so that we can move it on to the session for voting. Thank you very much.
You're very much welcome. And Sijus Massey, to you, Mr. Speaker, as well. I just want to make one closing comment on the bill. It's very interesting. I'm sure there's a reason for December 10th, but it's also very fitting as it's right next to December 8th. And, you know, so as we, as we recognize we were attacked, and then you're recognizing those who subsequently defended, and I think that's very appropriate. Is there a reason for December 10th?
There, that December 10th is when the island was formally surrendered. December 8th is when we were invaded, December 10th is when we surrendered.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and we look forward to the markup on hearing of Bill 177-38 LS. And so at this time, having received all comments and discussion on the bill, I will consider it as having been heard. And so now we will proceed to the final bill on the agenda, and that bill is going to be Bill 128-38 COR. This bill is introduced by Teresa M. Terlahey, Sabina Flores Perez, Chris Burnett, Senator Talat Tadegui, all of these senators, and it's an act to amend 6205 of Chapter 6, Title 4, Guam Code annotated relative to the requiring that the copies of petitions for above-step recruitment be posted on the Guam Public Notice website and sent to the Speaker of Illes Laturan Guahan. And I understand that Senator Sabina Flores Perez will be introducing this legislation on behalf of Senator Teresa M. Terlahey. Sijus Massey, and you may proceed, Senator Perez.
Sijus Massey, Chairman Duñez. So I'd like to read this on behalf of Senator Terlahey. So Bill Number 128-38 seeks to improve transparency and accountability in government hiring by ensuring fairness and maintaining public trust. Specifically, this measure strengthens the process of above-step recruitment so that it is open, well-documented, and safeguarded against misuse while upholding fiscal responsibility. Under the current law, step one of the pay grade assigned to a classified position is a regular rate for initial employment in any department or agency. Current law allows an appointing authority or a head of an agency, department, or public corporation to petition the Director of Administration, the Judicial Counsel, or the appropriate governing board for recruitment at a higher step not to exceed Step 10. This can only be done because of the documented recruitment difficulty or exceptional qualifications, and such petitions must be posted on the agency's website for 10 days before an applicant is hired. However, these postings are temporary and often difficult to access afterward. Bill Number 128-38 expands the requirement to include posting on the Guam Public Notices' portal website and notifying the Speaker of Illes Laturan Guahan at least 10 days before the applicant is hired. This ensures petitions remain accessible to the public and the legislature without causing recruitment delays or additional cost. Publication will also help ensure that recruitment difficulty and exceptional qualifications are applied fairly and consistently across all government agencies. By making these petitions more accessible, the measure enhances oversight, ensures hiring decisions are well justified, and promotes transparency in the use of taxpayer dollars. This and promotes transparency in the use of taxpayer dollars. This strengthens the merit system protections, prevents salary disparities, and improves accountability in government hiring practices. Colleagues, this is a simple but meaningful improvement to current law. It will give our people greater confidence that above-step recruitments are being done fairly, for good cause, and with the necessary accountability. I respectfully ask for your support of the passage of Bill Number 128-38. Sidozmasi.
Sidozmasi, Senator Perez, on behalf of Senator Teresa M. Terlahi. We did put out invitations. I know that, I believe, the OPA as well as some of the team members are currently doing some fieldwork, but I believe we have a representative from the OPA's office who will be reading some testimony into the record. So once again, sir, if you will, introduce yourself, who you are and who you're with, and proceed with your testimony. Sidozmasi.
Good afternoon again, everyone. My name is Jarek Hernandez. I'm from the Office of Public Accountability, and I'm here on behalf of public auditor Benjamin J. F. Cruz, who is currently attending the Association of Pacific Islands Public Auditors Conference in Saipan. And so he asked me to be here to give his brief testimony in support of Bill 128-38. And so I will read his testimony. Hafiday, Senator Duñez, and committee members, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill Number 128-38. The Office of Public Accountability supports the intent of the bill in promoting more accountability and transparency in the government of Guam recruitment process, specifically on above-step recruitment for government employees. This is in line with OPA's vision of the government of Guam being the standard of public trust and good governance. I want to thank Senator Teresa M. Terlahi and her co-sponsors for introducing this bill and wholeheartedly support its urgent passage. Thank you for your consideration. Sinceramente, Benjamin J. F. Cruz, public auditor. Thank you.
Sidozmasi, Mr. Hernandez. You may have a couple of questions from the group, so maybe if you could possibly answer, I'll just have you stay and have our senators be recognized. Vice Speaker Tony Adetokounmpo, okay, no questions? Okay, so Senator Gumatato, you recognize?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things if I could. Some recent examples of above-step recruitment petitions include efforts to recruit a University of Guam Camus II in October 2024, or one year after initially attempting to fill the vacant position, a public defender service corporation attorney level four position in 2022, and a Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority accountant one position. For reference, Mr. Chair, there was a December 2021 media article. It reported that the legislative chairperson on health at the time, also the primary sponsor of Bill 128-38, sent a follow-up letter to the GMHA board stating in part that she was awaiting copies of petitions for above-step recruitments and for the creation or amendment of petitions as initially requested on November 19, 2021. Then Speaker Terlahi made note that the petitions were not available during the hearing despite the request, and the absence of these documents from GMHA prior to a November 2021 Health Committee Oversight Hearing of the hospital sidestepped the purpose of that particular hearing. Mr. Chair, I guess the question back to the committee on this particular measure would be, how many weeks or months do agencies typically await prior to considering filling an above-step recruitment, and to what extent have agencies advertised employment opportunities regionally, nationally, and internationally, or consulted organizations such as the Guam Bar Association, the Guam Board of Accountancy, the Guam Medical Association, and the Guam Nurses Association, as just a couple of examples, to help reach as many potential applicants as they can, particularly if the initial recruitment, Mr. Chair, attempts, or at least the recruitment attempts failed to attract interest? And then finally, Mr. Chair, based on minutes from the February 18, 2025 meeting of the Guam Education Board, where it was reported that an applicant was, quote, "asking for step 10," what information can be disclosed confirming that certain individuals have requested or agencies have offered above-step recruitment not necessarily based on documented recruitment difficulty? Mr. Chair, just a couple of questions for the, for the committee on this particular bill. Thanks again for the time today as well.
Sidozmasi, Senator Gumatato, and once again, thank you for the homework for the committee. We'll certainly look forward to answering those questions and the markup of the bill and also to include that in the committee report. So Sidozmasi once again. Senator Titegwe, you recognize at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, you know, of course, I'm a sponsor of this legislation. I truly believe that it's, it's something that this body, this government, needs to practice more fairly. And that's what we're here to do. So above recruit practices, some of the key issues that I see, Mr. Chair, is that, one, in fiscal year 2021, Guam Memorial Hire, 245 individuals with 23 hired above the step pace, standard pay step. Of these, 70 positions were non-clinical. Then Speaker Terlahi, the author of the legislation, questioned the justification for these above-step hires, especially in non-clinical roles, and expressed concerns about the lack of transparency, noting that GMH did not provide the actual petition for these recruitments. So with regard to transparent documentation, Mr. Chair, the hearing highlighted issues with GMH documentation and reporting of the hiring practice. Also, there were calls for improvement on transparency to ensure that hiring decisions, particularly those involving above-step salaries, were justified and in line with public expectations. Also, resource allocations and staffing vacancies. Discussions addressed the balance between hiring for clinical versions, non-clinical provisions, with concerns that resources might be diverted from essential medical staff. The hearing also examined ongoing staff vacancies and the challenge of this recruitment. Mr. Chair, it's obvious that with these shenanigans going on, it's just not fair for our, the people who take their tests, who go to school, who provide the information and programs that they're required in order to take these positions, are left behind, and that should never happen. So that's what we're here today, and I truly support this legislation and look forward to its quick passage, because every day that goes by, we never know what other political hire of an individual that was hired for. And we all know that these hires were based on what I had mentioned was early, for years, both media reports and public commentary have raised concerns about who you know determining hiring outcomes in government positions. Above-step hiring, paying new hirers more than they typically entry-level rates, that's what was going on in this government. Has something been perceived as a mechanism to reward political allies or convenient merit-based hiring principles based on because, you know, you voted for me? It needs to stop. Next year is an election year. Now's the time to get this bill passed ASAP. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sidozmasi, Senator Titegwe. Senator Lohan, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, just one question, basically. When, on Section 6205, recruitment to above step, I know it says, "Every petition shall be scrutinized and amply justified before being approved." That should be a standard, but are there any additional steps that will be taken again to make sure that they prevent, again, misuse of the above-step recruitment by the authorities? And, you know, and how does this bill strengthen that, this process then? Because, again, it says here, "be scrutinized and amply justified before being approved." That's a standard. It should be a standard. But what additional steps are there, again, to prevent the misuse by authority of the above-step recruitment?
Sorry, was that a question for me?
Yes, 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 yes. Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. So in my reading of the bill, I don't believe, the only thing really it does, it just adds this additional step of the posting and the transmission to the legislature, which I think is at least a good step to getting it more transparent. But I believe you do have a good point in terms of how do we, I don't think it does address that, the principle of the above step and the usage of it. Maybe that's something that needs to be looked into to strengthen.
Yeah, no, and thank you, because, yeah, just on what, of course, Senator Titegwe had mentioned in regards to, you know, political hires and things of that nature. But, you know, again, a needed bill and rightfully so. But, you know, the standards that apply here, that's just a standard, and all applications, regardless whether the above step or just regular application, should be highly scrutinized, you know, and all that. So what additional steps should we have? And maybe something that we can work on in maybe the markup, something in regards to the additional steps to make sure that, you know, this is not misuse or abuse by the, again, the recruitment authority?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Sidozmasi, Senator Lohan. Senator Perez, I think I'll just have you close since you opened, or you want to just do now? Okay, Senator Perez, okay, sounds good. So we'll move on then to Senator Montanani. Any questions or comments?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Sidozmasi. Senator Barnett, you recognize?
Sidozmasi, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Hernandez, for your testimony today in support of the bill, which I support. Obviously, I'm a co-sponsor. I think my good friend, the senator from Tumuning, is right to say that there are a whole lot of shenanigans going on. And even when you hear from the actual above-step hires themselves, like the justification they have for validating their above-step recruitment, it just doesn't add up. I mean, you know, they're putting two plus two and coming out with 22, and that's not the right answer. So I guess my only worry is that we're going to require the posting of this information, and then we have 10 days prior to the hiring. So I just hope that that's enough time to enable the proper reactions and maybe even sometimes the approval of this hiring. And so then I also support the semi-annual reports of above recruitment attempts to the speaker. And I think if you kind of just go down and look at these above-step recruitments, a lot of them are very hard to justify, you know, especially in the case of the Guam Memorial Hospital, where you have so many of these above-step recruitments being executed for non-medical personnel. I mean, there was one recently where there was an above-step recruitment of the Personnel Services Administrator, and I'm sorry, but those positions typically, qualified applicants for those positions grow on trees. I mean, there's no shortage of individuals who are qualified at the regular step, not the above-step recruitment. And that's what I'm talking about when you ask some of these hires, "Oh, why do you think you deserved an above-step recruitment?" And they say, "Oh, because I have this degree or that degree," and sometimes it's not even relevant to the position. And so I think this is a great way to bring more transparency to this issue, because many times as senators, we don't hear about these above-step recruitments until well after they've been executed. And I know you're, you know what I'm talking about, Mr. Hernandez. And that's too late, because the carabao's already left the barn, you know. So I'm very supportive of this measure, and I hope that it gives us enough lead time to kind of interject, not necessarily with the legislative process, but maybe you give a phone call to your, your agency that you have oversight of and say, "Hey, you know, katu na zefen." So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to speak in support of the bill, and Sidozmasi again to the Office of Public Accountability for their testimony.
Sidozmasi, Senator Barnett. Senator Cavill, you recognize at this time?
Have a day. Thank you again, Mr. Chair. I really don't have any question, and that note, I yield my time. Thank you.
Sidozmasi. And now Senator Perez for any questions, comments, and to close on the bill representing the author.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a question for Jarek. Has the OPA done any audits regarding above-step recruitment and what was the findings?
No, I don't believe we have had any audits specifically on above step. But I know that hiring has been one of the topics that come about, you know, when we solicit, you know, audit topics from various sources. I know that hiring kind of does tend to be one of the citizen concerns that come about. So maybe it's something we may consider in the future.
Okay. Thank you for that. Yeah, I don't have any, a lot of questions on this, but definitely support this bill. You know, it's, it's critical that we uphold the merit system, and this is one of the ways, by shining a light on any inconsistencies in hiring, especially above-step recruitment, when in case perhaps there's a lot of, there's, there's not really what is it, a need for it, because there's, there's a pool of people out there for a specific job. But I completely understand for critical positions, like clinical positions, which we know we have difficulty recruiting those positions. You know, there is definitely more of a qualification for that. So I do hope for a swift passage of this bill, and I thank you, I thank the chairman for scheduling this hearing and the support. Thank you. Sidozmasi.
Sidozmasi, Senator Perez. So having completed this bill, 128-38, this closing out this public hearing, this will conclude today's public hearing on Bill Number 1, Bill Number 177, and once again, 128-38 COR. The committee will continue to accept written testimony on the bills within seven calendar dates from today, which may be addressed to myself, Senator Christopher M. Duñez, as chairman of the committee, and mailed to 163 West Chalanson Tupapa in Agatia, 96910. You may also email your testimonies to senator.duñez@guamlegislature.gov. Today's public hearing is now adjourned, and the time is 3:46. Sidozmasi for everyone who was able to attend, and have a great afternoon. Sidozmasi, Guam.